Okay, I am going to call, I'm calling the meeting to order. I am calling the meeting to order. And the first thing we're gonna do though is we need a motion to allow trustee O'Reilly to attend remotely.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Tenucci.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Browski, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Okay, motion carried, you're in the meeting. All rise for a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance. Alright, welcome everyone. My Grown-Up Christmas is being filmed and so that's why it looks like this. Mario Lopez is playing Long Grove Mayor, so we'll find out in the movie what decisions he did or made or whatever, so it'll be interesting.
He's gonna build a bridge.
He's gonna build a bridge, okay. The first thing I'd like to do, and I think it's kinda fitting too, cuz you know, we're gonna be renovating this village hall almost fifty years after, you know, this building was moved here and, you know, we're just getting started, so it, you know, the Historical Society has having, or had their fiftieth anniversary, they just had their fiftieth anniversary, so it was on April 1st. So I, I wrote a resolution, this resolution recognizes the fiftieth anniversary of the Long Grove Historical Society, and if I can read it out loud and read it plainly, hopefully that will work. So it says, "Whereas the Long Grove Historical Society was formed on April 1st, 1974, to accept the Drexler Tavern, a gift of Mr. Vandermeulen," that's the building over there, that's our village hall offices, "the Drexler Tavern built around 1859 was moved from Route 53 to its current location in December of 1977, whereas the Long Grove Historical Society raised funds to contribute to the renovations of the building that now serves as our village hall. Whereas the Long Grove Historical Society also rescued and restored the Archer School House in March of 1977, which now sits behind the village hall. Whereas the Long Grove Historical Society also accepted and relocated the Ruth Barn that dates back to 1850 and was donated, donated by Philip de Sert in 1980. Whereas the Long Grove Historical Society also maintains an 1850-style farmhouse in the back corner of, as a sample parking lot, originally owned by the Widener family in Buffalo Grove that serves as a meeting place and museum. Whereas Long Grove Historical Society has made the past come alive with costume docents, thousands of area third graders, through programs developed by historical society volunteers. Whereas the Long Grove Historical Society has put on many events throughout the years, including annual ghost walk, held the Friday before Halloween. Whereas the Long Grove Historical Society raised and contributed $53,497 towards the really, uh, restoration of the Robert Parkoffen Bridge. I have a picture of the check, so I was easily able to find that number, so I accepted it.
Is there any other check?
Yes. Thank you for that. Whereas the Long Grove Historical Society has relied solely on volunteers from our community, whereas the Long Grove Historical Society relies 100% on fundraising donations to fund activities, including the maintenance of its historical buildings that we just talked about. So now, therefore be it, result, the Village of Long Grove would like to recognize and congratulate the Historical Society on its fiftieth anniversary and thank all, all those that have donated countless hours to this worthy cause and for all the contributions the Long Grove Historical Society has made to the Village of Long Grove past this ninth day of April 2024. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, moved by trustee Browski.
Second.
Second by trustee O'Connor. That's a roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
We can do it as a voice vote if you want.
Oh, you know what, let's do it, let's do a voice vote so that it's recorded. Go ahead, take the.
Uh, so trustee Tenucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
You're muted, Bobby.
Aye.
Um, so trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
And trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Alright, the ayes have it, congratulations. Oh, O'Connor, did you, oh, I thought you did that.
O'Connor was second, oh, sorry, trustee O'Connor, sorry.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Alright, motion carried, congratulations, thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is the homeowners associations. Oh, do you want a picture? Okay, you wanna, you guys wanna come up for a picture?
Do you guys come up for a picture, start with, uh?
You're just adding things to it. Just, just so you know.
Nine o'clock now.
How are we doing this?
Um, if they wanna come kinda stand in front of the board, make it kinda stand.
Alright, we'll stand up. Just come on up here, yeah.
Look, stand further in front, and then, if you wanna like hold up the.
I'll hold it up, it, you know, you guys may want to, uh.
How much of the Christmas decorations do you want in the background?
I don't need to be seen, but thank you.
There you go, alright, that's perfect. There you go. The decorations are gonna throw it off.
Moment in history, right?
Perfect, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll get a signed copy of this to you.
Thank you.
And frame it up for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, yep. Okay, so moving on, anything else, Chris?
No, we're good.
Okay, thank you. Homeowners associations, is Rob seats, he's not here, Rob, are you online from Eastgate? What about Stockbridge Farm, Denise Keane? Or Dennis, I'm sorry, thank you, Dennis. Okay, so let's keep moving, public comment, anyone have public comment? Benjamin?
We are, I'm hoping finishing that review this, uh, this week.
And so then that means that, it'll be public notice at some point?
Ultimately, when, when everything's ready, there'll be a public notice and ultimately a public hearing.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, Chris?
Jim Finn, County Subdivision. You all know how last year we've been here for the water issues that we're having in the subdivision, you guys did a tremendous job at getting a culvert and the water off staying to where it used to be years ago, but it's just not quite there yet. When the water is flowing from the pond in the springtime here, because the pond should flow, but the water is just below the culvert that goes underneath the road, so when we get rain, we do get water going into the private yards again. Also, that culvert at the end has kind of like a, a V down and it's kinda like a funnel whereas it's raining, it's grabbing water at that, even though it's not a lot, it is grabbing water that's just coming out of the sky and rolling underneath the street, the north side of the road. Last year, Jeff was saying that in phase two, there would be a dam that would be put up in front of the culvert, so the water would have to raise up a significant amount so the pipe go, that the water goes into, the pipe would be roughly three quarters full before it would start flowing to the north side of the road. That is pretty much needed, uh, eight dam, just because the normal water flowing from the pond is just below the culvert. I know when we talked last year, Jeff, you said the ditch, uh, the culvert would be twelve inches from the bottom of the culvert to the bottom of the ditch, it's only five, so that's actually added to, there doesn't have to be a lot of water flowing to where it's very close to flowing into that house, or through the road.
Do you have, uh, any pictures of the water? Cause I went, I went after the rains last week, I didn't see anything inside yard, so I just wanted to get an order of magnitude of how much water.
There, I mean, after the real heavy rains, between the two houses, there was some water, but I'm not attributing that to any water, just for the heavy rains. But when you look at it from, uh, just the natural flow that's coming from that pond, if you go out there and look at it, it's less than an inch before it'll start going over, so if we get a heavy rain, which we think we haven't had this, uh, spring, but if we get a really heavy, click downwater, and that water would build up a little bit, it, it, it wouldn't need that pipe right now as the stances and then overflow, just another way for water to shroud. So I know you said phase two, that, you know, that little blockage or dam would be put up to make this, like, a complete resolution, that that needed to be done.
Yeah, you know, I just, we talked about phase one and then if there is a phase two, so there's no missing on that, but I'll get with the new village manager and we'll talk about that.
No disrespect, but you said last year, in phase two, you didn't say if there's a phase two, you said in phase two. I will, uh, get with the new village manager and talk about that.
Good news, it's working, so maybe just a little tweak, so, alright, cool, thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Alright, um, we'll turn it over to Lieutenant Kaiser for the sheriff's report.
Keith Kaiser, Sheriff's Office, uh, earlier this morning.
Excuse me, Bill, could you, could you shift the speaker?
Yeah, can we move the, uh, can you come up forward? Yeah, that's, the other microphone, you guys two? Is it close enough? That's probably a good spot for it, cuz for, between you and Rita.
Yeah, just leave that one there, he'll leave.
Oh, you just muted it. Alright. We're ready.
Alright, keep it brief, uh, in preparation for your budget talks earlier today, the county board approved the supplemental agreement for leasing contract with Long Grove, three year extension, um, so we'll get copy of that to the village either end of this week early next week.
Great.
So we appreciate the mutually beneficial and, um, amicable responsibilities of controlling the, the community for you.
Thanks for the good news.
Everybody have any questions, Bobby?
Keith, thanks for coming here. Alright, consent agenda, we have two things on it, we have the, uh, the March 2024 pay warrant, bill warrant, and then we have approval of the regular board meeting minutes from March 26th, 2024, um, subject to non-substantiative revisions. Anyone wanna make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, moved by trustee Browski. Seconded by trustee O'Connor. Voice vote?
Uh, roll call vote.
Well, isn't it that we're approving the bill warrant?
Uh, it's roll call vote cuz it's consent agenda.
Oh, okay, so roll, uh, oh, I meant to say roll call, sorry, I meant, I meant a roll call vote, sorry, yes, thank you, thanks for.
Oh, it's opposite day.
Opposite, yes, thank you.
Christmas is throwing everybody off.
So trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Uh, trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Tenucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
And trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
We got everyone? Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
No, you're doing a great job, thanks for, uh, for subbing for a while here until we get a new clerk, alright. Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is, uh, is discussion of the 2024, 2025 fiscal year Long Grove budget. We have to walk out of this room with an agreement on the budget because, um, it has to be posted ten days before our next meeting, we'll have to talk about who can attend that meeting, cuz I have a challenge, um, and, um, uh, there has to be a public hearing at the next meeting to get it approved, and we need to do that before the next fiscal year starts. So, um, I've, I've got a presentation on the screen, um, that village manager Sparkman put together, and I'm gonna turn it over to Chris unless, Anne, you wanna make any comments? Cuz this is your presentation and it's been, you know, edited a little bit.
Oh, yeah, no, this is just a template from a couple of years ago, and Chris has done all of the updating. In the last two weeks, I think you were, we, we talked about some other presentation, there were some open questions on water and food forms, um, and I would like, we also met with, uh, potential people, the ones, remember when we did the call for projects? One really unanimous was we should get somebody in who's actually on staff doing finance. We met with, um, some consultants who I feel very strongly, I feel very good about also, and they were about in the right ballpark of what we had estimated, so with that.
Yeah, so this is the presentation, these are the slides we went through a couple weeks ago, they are, give a few updated numbers, just as things changed with another revenue and expenses coming in, we don't need to spend too much time on this, sales tax is running a little higher than it was before, um, interest is still coming in, and the overall revenues are up five percent from the budget, so.
Yeah, still uses the one we're just not sure of, right?
Yep, yeah.
Any questions on this slide?
Basically highlights of the general fund revenue and expense.
A high level.
And this is basically the same, this didn't change?
Just that some figures changed, not, not, I mean hardly anything.
Not significant, okay.
Nothing material.
Okay.
This is also minorly updated, the biggest change here being on the expense side, the transfers to capital, um, you'll see that as a big chunk in the chart on the right, that does include the possibility of the additional $800,000 for Lake Michigan, want to do that, so that will change if we don't, um, come down a little bit, but we'll talk to tell them that.
Can I just, as a reminder, we're carrying a big surplus intentionally for two large projects we had always contemplated, the Lake Michigan Water and the Village Hall.
Yeah, we have over two and a half.
So, um, hey Bobby, you can hear just fine, right, correct?
Wrong.
Okay, good, alright.
Did she say right or wrong?
No, I, I hear very little.
Oh, very little, okay.
No, she said wrong.
Wrong, okay, I heard right. Alright, so Christie, we're gonna have to speak up, Anne speak up please, yeah.
I'll talk.
You can hear me though, right?
We can move that back over.
I always hear you.
Okay.
I'll speak up a little more. So if there aren't any additional questions on this slide, we can keep it rolling.
Can you see the screen, Bobby?
I, I can, if I could ask you, I, I heard the tail end of a consultant, it's.
Okay, this is, it's a template we've seen before, the numbers have not changed materially for the, since the last meeting.
Yeah, but the consultant, the consultant, yeah.
The two things I, I said, we're carrying a big, uh, Chris had mentioned this pie chart includes the transfer to capital, and I had just commented, we've been carrying a, a surplus for two projects that we have been discussing, I won't use the word always, um, have been discussing, and that is a connection to Lake Michigan Water and the village hall expansion, which the village hall were committed to, uh, the other.
Okay, I'm, I'm going, I'm going back a slide, you, you mentioned a, a consultant, and, and I didn't know what you were referring to.
Yes, so we had, when we, when I, when we called for additional projects, the one that everybody was consistent on was getting a part-time financial person, financial directory on staff. Chris brought somebody in, I was able to spend about an hour meeting with a couple of gentlemen who can be consultants, that I feel very good about them, and they came in, they came in at about the rate that we were expecting.
And it's in one of the slides.
Okay, perfect, I understand now.
I'm just, I'm vouching for, now, now there's actual, um, not just a placeholder number, there's, uh, actual some people and numbers that match them.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Okay, you want me to move to the next slide?
Yeah. This should also look similar, this just, uh, stacks up the revenues and expenses, uh, a little differently, the main highlight on here is, um, you can see how much lower the, you know, general operating expenses are relative to the revenues coming in, um, you just have those large outlays of capital projects.
Yeah, to clear the slide, the revenue sources are on the left side of the, of it, and the general fund revenues are at 4.75, not, 4.759 million, but the actual general operating expenses are, as, as budgeted here, are only just under 3.4 million, 3.362 million, and per our policy, um, just to note, we only have, the, whatever, you know, our annual, um, general expenses are, is what we have to keep in reserves.
Right, that's our keep the lights on in the village running basics.
Correct, yeah, so I'll turn it back over to you, I just wanted to clear the slide, and hopefully that was cleared, everyone.
So on top of the annual surplus, we're also carrying a, you know, $8.2 million fund balance right now in this general fund, um.
That's 8.2 million.
Which is much more than the, you know.
Which is a lot more than the 3.4 we need.
Yes, right, so we don't have a money issue, which is a good thing.
At the moment.
At the moment, yes, I know, yeah, right.
We did factor in a, um, a slight reduction in the, um, sales tax due to the possibility of the grocery tax being eliminated, but if that doesn't happen, we'll, we'll even be more ahead.
I mean, when we do the public hearing, I can't remember how we did it last year, did we use the PowerPoint for the public hearings that we did?
I think we did, you know, there was not a lot of comment last year.
Right.
It really wasn't.
Yeah, almost none.
Yeah, the PowerPoint, you know, some, some people think in pie charts, some people think in stacked bars, it's easy to connect dots across, the key question is, does anybody come in and have questions?
Right. So got it, so this is at a high level, then you've got now some questions for us, right?
Yeah, so now we'll get into.
Is there, is there any other questions here, no, yes?
I have some questions, but I can wait.
You can ask now if you want.
They might come up.
Well, they're just, they're just line items, yeah.
Okay, well then let's go, yeah, let's keep going and then, yeah.
I just wanna touch on a few of the operating expense changes that were added in this year. I added a line item for electronic data storage, since I've been here, and I think it's been commented to me several times, this is a need that we have, um, and we need it soon, uh, so I did get a proposal from a company called Peter Fuge, they're used in almost every municipality in Lake County, across the country, um, to store data with, this is the cost for that annually, and, uh, you know, we have boxes of.
Where's your data stored?
It's in the cloud.
What's the security protocol?
Uh, they meet, we, I mean, they would have to meet all of the standards required.
So, um, let me ask this question, but obviously, the question is, do you want it in the budget, and then obviously, um, this is at a level, you probably wanna run it through.
Yeah, we'd have a contract.
Contract.
I'd run it through the board, um, I'd write a memo on it.
Do the human resources to do what's on the staff side to make it happen?
Uh, yes, what we will need to do is probably contract with the firm to put all the historical data in.
Okay.
That might cost some additional.
We would, that, that would be good to put some placeholder in there, just, this is to store it, but do you actually have the hands to, to make that happen?
We can start doing immediately what we have on site and current. The historical stuff that we store offsite would be a, a big project.
Yep.
Not on data storage.
Okay, alright, then the next one, yeah, go ahead, keep going.
Finance or Director Services, which Anne touched on earlier, uh, we met with the firm, Waterbuck and Amen, um, I think they actually submitted for audit stuff here previously, so they're.
They were on our list, they were, they were on the shortlist when we went, uh, looked to change auditors, so at that time, um, uh, Dave and Debbie and I had interviewed them.
Yeah, so, so this, again, this would be putting the money in the budget, the decision to hire that would come before the board, right, so.
Yeah, I'm just propping that, done some background on it, we have affirmed the price matches what we originally thought, um, guys are in favor of including this in the budget, we'll add it in, and then I'll come next meeting or another one with a proposal for to engage services with the firm.
We've got it held right now on page three under outside services tab.
Are there any questions on that, or concerns?
I'd be concerned if we don't go.
Yeah, yeah. Keep us going.
Yep, Building and Planning Services, just cuz it's a big ticket item, um, we included a 15% placeholder, we don't know that this will actually be what it's going to be, uh, trustee Tenucci, uh, with firms that have RFPs this week, Thursday and Friday, so we're gonna start the interview process, trying to have a better idea on cost, but it still might be a little bit of an on-year, so add a little bit of a, uh, an increase to it, just to be cautious, but we'll come next meeting with a recommendation on what firm should do. I think we carry a transfer to the pathway fund, it's been a few years since we've done this, um, so I wanted to add something in here for the board to discuss, um, if they wanted to make a transfer into the pathway fund, so how much?
So we have stopped, for whatever reason, stopped contributing to the pathway fund.
That's one of my questions here, is like.
Yeah, so we need to, I mean, so I looked at it, I was looking at the budget, I'm like, why did we stop contributing? I have no idea, why did it?
I think it's to save perfume.
Yeah, so I mean, we, my opinion is, and that's what I told Chris, is we should be putting whatever that is, a thousand or even a little bit more, so that there is some money to work with, cuz there's things that can be done, even before the master plan's done, there's things that, you know, can be done, we always have, the trustee, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, oh, I don't, I don't know, you, I just, I noticed that, I went through the.
Never, it was never a, a discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, it was weird, I went through the budget with a fine tooth comb on Saturday, I went through every line item, like, ah, zero.
I had to say, I'd stay next to.
Yeah, no, no issues, but I mean, is everyone okay with that? I mean, we've always budgeted a certain, it's like 50 grand is what we've always budgeted, you may even wanna make up a little bit too, cuz there was nothing there last year either.
That was gonna be my suggestion, make up for lost time.
I would support that.
So, I mean, and I don't know if, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, something like that, is, is, you know, something that you could actually do something with, make a connection somewhere, um, crosswalk, whatever that.
By the way, I have asked that we please renew our subscription to the grant, so that I can only see a few available grants, I can't see the whole thing cuz we didn't, we didn't extend our subscription.
So are you the one who's actually using the subscription? Are you the one using the subscription?
Apparently, I'm the only one, cuz.
Nobody on staff either? I'd love to see those paired up too.
I don't know if they're either.
I'd love to see those paired up, but there's somebody on staff also.
I keep, I keep getting their emails, uh, uh, because I used them in the past, and it's like, you know, I only get to see so many.
We can connect.
Well, and that's how you discover the, the crosswalk. So would a hundred thousand dollars stress anyone out for pathways this year?
Do I hear a hundred fifty?
Whatever you guys decide, I'm, I'm good either way, so. Cuz it's, it's stuff that we.
We can have the rest of it discussed, I would support a hundred, I.
Okay.
I wrote down a hundred, we can come.
Okay.
Now we're moving on to the capital side of things, so we have, um, speed radar signs that have been brought up, so we went and did some research, Nicole, we had a chance to read that, um, it is recommended that we purchase solar powered speed radar signs, they mount on two pre-existing poles, they're easy to take up, take down and move around, uh, they're secured onto the pole with a unique locking mechanism, with a key, so, hopefully.
Are the poles secure?
Bandals, they might be, yeah, they're, um, yeah, so.
So what's nice about them too is, they slide onto a mounting bracket, when you wanna move them somewhere else, you just unlock them, slide them out, put them somewhere else, slide them in, so you're not doing, that's the installation work every time, just slide in, slide out, that's it.
Well, how many are we purchasing, and are we moving these throughout? Well, how many are we purchasing, and are we moving these throughout the town? What do we do in the winter?
What I would recommend is we should consider four. I believe two of them should be moving around, and I believe the other two should stay more or less all the time on Checker and Oakwood.
I like Diamond Lake Road better.
On which road?
Diamond Lake Road.
Yeah, you know, they used to patrol that pretty well.
So that would be one of the locations it would go to, yeah.
It's a county road, but, you know, I, I mean, I think what Rita's trying to get to is how do we equitably distribute those around the municipality? Because those are the only two roads highlighted for speeding, but speeding exists everywhere.
Well, Cuba.
And what's the guy...
Cuba, perfect, Long Grove Road.
And not, to me, it's, we should not be designing this from the board's standpoint, but what's the guiding philosophy that we want to ask management to take?
Right.
Well, if I could add something, it seems as if we're working on the squeaky wheel theory of government, and though there may be an issue at Checker, and there may be an issue at Oakwood, I can tell you, there is an issue on Diamond Lake Road. That is a cut through, every single day, morning and night, that Diamond Lake is a cut through from Diamond Lake over to Gilmer. So let's not pretend we don't exist, and I'm going to become more of a squeaky wheel on this area of Long Grove. We've been ignored for too long.
You bet it's...
So I would vehemently object to dedicating these two signs to the same place all year long. I don't think that's fair.
Why, I was recommending four, not two.
I, I think we should figure, at some point, you know, is this something we ask the engineer to do, or something, a guiding philosophy for how you determine and how often do you move? Because I think, I do think as a philosophy, I think novelty is, matters, change, change matters, because it changes attention.
Well, we've got research on when people stop seeing, even though they're mobile units, so to speak, there is a point where people stop seeing them.
So, novel...
You know, so, that would be, me, that would be my, if they're not seeing, I've seen some people speed up, kind of like, oh, yeah, you know...
So can I make a recommendation?
No, but I, I think we're...
At this point, do we want four in the budget?
No, so I was going to make a recommendation.
We're talking about an extra $5,000.
I was going to make a recommendation.
No, for two more.
No, that we, so again, we pilot it, move it around, we get some guidance, we put money in the budget for at least two, right? You want four?
No.
Okay, so who wants four?
We know we have multiple issues.
Jeff, can you, can, like, again, I'm on the human back, the human capital back, we have the bandwidth to think and rearrange four.
Yeah, so, Chief Blensky over in Tullia, they've got two of them, so he's been treasure trove information over the years, I mean, but, yeah, his sentiment is, they've only got two, so...
You know, there was any one more?
Well, and it...
If they had more, they would certainly take them and move them around if they find the effect of that.
Yeah, they'd use them primarily on Long Grove Road and their side of Cuba.
I've seen all of those, yeah, they move them around.
Those two, oh, okay.
We did suggest, possibly, a quarter basis, based on whether to call mine or areas...
You're feeding the squeaky wheel if you say that.
So, so again, this is for the budget, would everyone be okay?
Yes.
How permanent they are, all those kinds of decisions, don't have to be made tonight.
No, we just...
The money needs to go, are you okay for four?
Yes.
I am.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I'm fine.
Bobby, Bobby?
I, I guess maybe then I'd get some.
There you go, there you go. Yeah, I, we'll have to figure it out, yeah. More budgeted, and that's the part that's got to get sorted out, this is our main.
All right, Oakwood Road, Flexville Pipeline, got its background, I got some numbers on this, $4,630 to purchase, and for ELO to come in and install and remove them annually, because with snowplow driving, it would have to come out for the winter season, costs about $500 per year, that. So this was again, to prevent some of the illegal U-turning going on, that intersection right there. This is the most cost effective way to try and get that.
So I'm sure many people are not familiar with that intersection, but...
I'm, I'm very familiar with it.
Okay, yeah, between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 PM, there's an illegal U-turn about one every two minutes, conservatively.
This is, this is the most illogical solution to a problem. I, I, I don't, I don't understand it, unfortunately, it's not going to cost a whole lot of money, because it's, it's just, I go through there at least 10 times a week, if not many, many times more, and, and this is just illogical. But go for it.
Bobby, sorry, this is Chris, logical or illogical, I didn't quite...
Illogical, illogical. Read, reading the, the thought process of, of somebody that's going to decide a half a mile away to be in the right lane to get into another road to make a U-turn, to wait for two consecutive sets of lights in order to go west, doesn't make sense.
Well, I do know, so, so Bobby, what I do know is that if the light turns red, the arrow turns red, if you, if you sneak over, the way the timing of the lights go, if you, if you were able to sneak over the right lane and pull a U-turn, you would get the green light faster, and you would jump in front of all the traffic. So that's what they're doing, and it's going...
But if, but if the traffic is all backed up, how are you going to do that?
Um, they, it's, somehow they squeak by, because the left turn lane, the left turn lane's too short, they back up and they sneak around to the right, and then they, they turn on Oakwood, and they immediately make a U-turn, and then they get out...
Around the right one.
Yeah, and they get in front of everyone. So I, I know I have personally seen it, I don't know how bad it is, but I go, I'm the one that, I, I go there every day on my way home and, home from work that way, every day, so, so it is an issue, but, but anyways, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you sit at that intersection, any day between 3:00 and 5:00, and the time it takes for you to sit there and wait for the light to turn green on Oakwood, you'll see one or two or three doing that, every single time.
Is it dangerous?
I doubt it, it's annoying.
Well, what they're doing is ripping the shoulders.
Make the, turn the signal.
That's why U-turn, and it's a, if it's a landscape guy with his trailer, that's a big problem, too. But, yeah, that's, the timing of the lights is exactly...
You didn't, you had a comment over here.
And I'll just add, there is a no U-turn sign there, which is being violated, and it's not that we're sore because people are violating a sign, it's actually dangerous because several neighbors in Oakwood Creek, as well as Heron's Landing, have almost been T-boned by those people, because they're so determined to get around that corner before they lose the green light, that people have almost gotten T-boned as they're just driving down Oakwood Road. So it's actually a safety issue.
I'm a little, little bit disappointed we've got to pull them out during the winter season, which is two thirds, third of the year around here, right?
Yeah, I don't know if we necessarily need to take them down, or is that just to maybe prevent them from...
I am, but, yeah. One big storm, the snowplow, might just...
Take them out.
Snowplows, take it out.
And I'm sorry, I interrupted you, you were about to say something, go ahead, or the fourth.
Timing of the light.
Yeah, I know. Is it, could be any percentage in asking my guys?
Yeah, we, we that, I'd, you know, several times over the years, timing, driver partner talks about, or, or, and it's all similar lights?
Yes. From county passage, yeah, yeah.
All timed together, and they just reoptimized all of them, and the only way to do that was to be, make the cycle longer, so, it's already very, very long on that stretch.
It is long.
Point of, you know, that's why the U-turn is happening, so, long story, sort of different questions we've asked, and they've said, you already got it.
So, so the, the timing is actually already longer during the shower?
It's already optimized, you know...
I see. That's, that's the Lake County Passage joint thing, where the state program...
He doesn't have a signal, but...
Okay.
So, okay, so the question is...
In or out?
In or out? That's what we're trying to do here. Exact engineering can still be sorted out, because it'll still come back before the board, so.
So that will absolutely stop the U-turners for a relatively low, small amount of money.
I support in.
In, in. Bobby, you said maybe okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm crazy today, so I'll say yes.
Thanks, Bobby. All right.
Yep, next one is the HOA Road Program Grant, we're still pending some analysis on the roads, and how this would all work, but the idea would be is if this, we can include a placeholder amount in there until we develop a plan, sort out all the details, write a comprehensive report to the board to review, to make a final decision on it, so this is purely whether or not we want to include a placeholder amount in the budget, and how much we would want that to be.
And I had a recommendation of putting 250 grand in as a placeholder while we sort out the program. You said 52 HOAs the last time, right?
And that's wrong.
It's wrong, it's 51, but there's, it's, you've got to, it's only like, I don't even know if it's 30, how many are privately maintained, I don't know, 51.
Oh, I don't know.
So we have to have it, so it's not as big of, I mean, it's a smaller list, we don't have the exact linear mileage of the roads yet, you're working on it, but putting a dollar figure in there, if we can't figure it out, or we decide not to do it, we sweep the fund back, but we put some money in there to put the focus on, so that we could do it, if we can sort it all out.
I still have difficulty, I'm, I've just, I've got to tell you, I have difficulty even putting it in there, because I think it makes, it gives people hope before we have the teeth crossed and eyes dotted, that's how I feel, that I may be the minority.
Chris?
I think it's too premature. I think it's a great idea, I just think it's too premature, doubles into details, and we don't have anything to work with. It always added in, too.
And that, as I have previously said, to discuss it, I'm open to it, I, I agree with Ann, that put it in here, there are expectations, and, okay, so you dash the expectations, probably not a good idea. And if there, that's like $8,000 per community, we're replacing two roads, for a total of 17 properties, for $100,000, you know, $8,000 would be nice, but...
Well, it would...
It's kind of like spitting in the ocean.
So the thought process is, that, that's why starting the kitty this year, when we can figure it out, is you put some money in this year, you put some money in the next year, and there would be the ability for those HOAs to draw upon it when they need it, so that it's not, because you can't just, you know, you can't, you know, put a whole bunch of money in this fund, but what you could do, set it aside, accrue it, put the program together, so that those HOAs could draw against it when, when they need it, right?
I think we need to talk about it, because if they all come at once, and like, if the people in my, in my neighborhood, why didn't you let us know?
So, so, so again, again, the thought, again, the thought process was, there would be a scheme that talks about...
Yes, so...
Based on, you know, based on, there might be a small, medium, and large, type of scenario, there might be some other things that not allow somebody, as a gated community, we'd have to talk about those things, because they're not open to the public, per se, but it would be a amount allocated per year, and then, you know, if they didn't use it that year, it rolls over into the, the next year, right? And they, you set it up, it's something that you, you know, build a fund for, so that it's there when it's needed, for that HOA, because not everyone's going to be repaving their roads every year.
No, but, the fund runs out between now and when Stockbridge has to redo their roads, and everybody's used up, our money, it's going to be kind of unhappy.
Not if, not if the money was divided up in a way where there were certain amounts set aside each year for you.
Details.
You said, HOAs would come in when they need, when they need money...
And there would be money set aside, there would be money set aside for them based on the mileage of the road, so I, I, you know, I started this a year ago, and because of all the changes and managers were in the same spot, right? So, but the thought process was, you actually have a certain amount of money that's allocated to you every year, and nobody can take your allocation away, because you divide it up, right? And, so then, if you don't use it that year, it rolls into the next year, and hopefully we're contributing more to the next year, and you have a little bit more that you can use for Stockbridge Fund.
I felt, I, just, I feel like there's all kinds of details on allocation, administration, even custody, when you say nobody can take it away from you, I can't, I'm out right now.
Okay.
I will discuss it at some point, absolutely, but I'm out right now.
Okay. Bobby, what's your position?
I, I, I've always thought that there was an unfairness about how we do business, as far as the public, private, but I think we need a whole lot of discussion as to fairness, is it a per capita, or, or what? But one of the questions I've always wondered, is that, I know that an HOA should have a thinking fund, so that when they're, when they're ready to do their road, or they're big expensive items, they have money to do it, but if they haven't done enough, is there a way that we could loan them the money?
Well, that's another spin on the whole thing, too.
Yeah, it would be SSA-like, that's what we did with the water downtown.
Or an SSA, yeah.
That's possible.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's something else that could be looked at.
So, I, I'm, I'm in on, on keeping a place for it, but I, I think there has to be a lot of answers before we're ready to, to actually participate.
Okay. Let me ask this question another way, so I really wanted to make sure we put some money aside, because the timing's right, we didn't have to have the fund, I mean, we didn't have to everything all sorted out, it could be swept back if we can't figure it out, everyone's saying, well, if you do that, then you're setting an expectation, okay. But if we, if nobody's in agreement to do this tonight, is this something you'd revisit during the middle of the year, this next fiscal year, which we're going to be in very shortly?
Yeah.
And say, hey, we've got the funds, can we add, can we amend our budget to include this?
You can. Let me offer one other thought.
Okay.
And I don't know where you all would land on it, but instead of calling it HOA Road Program, you just simply have more generic, a road assistance program, and whether it's to assist in handling specific road problems we encounter, or whether you all develop a program that is satisfactory for HOA assistance, that would eliminate some of the expectation concern, still have money in the budget, and, you know, at least bring you to a point that you can have the conversations about the, the HOA assistance.
Where would this sit in, whether we go forward or don't, where would this be on the list of capital improvement projects that we presented and agreed upon a year, year and a half ago?
I would, I would assume that this would be monies that are independent of that, and monies that may never be used, or monies that if a HOA road program is ultimately conceived, you would then have a budgeted sum to move forward with that. But if not, there's no, there's no earmarking for HOAs.
The five-year capital improvement plan does have a line item in there for this program, but there's zero in it.
Yeah, the, the only place that's actually got money right now is the General Fund Reserve, that's, so, we're already transferring to the capital budget for the things that have been, we so far, posed and reviewed.
But we, we made a top 10 list, remember?
Yep.
Yep.
If, if we, to me, if we, okay, it's like, that, that just went up the list, and it's, to me, it's like, I, you know, I, I...
Does Vic's thoughts change anyone's perspective, or not?
I don't know, I think Vic's thoughts complicate so... I don't know. I think Vic's thoughts complicate it a little bit because I'm now the town or subdivision guy in the bright green shirt going, hey, you guys got money? I need your road. And, you know, I think it changes the whole dynamic between the public, the people on public roads versus the people on private roads. A lot that we need to think about the psychology of that, whether people actually want that or not. Because not if I'm Schaefer, living on Schaefer Road, and go, hey, you guys put money away for those people who were there when they bought their houses they knew, their private roads. But I don't know, Bill. I think it's a real complicated, but a very interesting and worthwhile discussion. And I really truly do. I think it's a great idea. I really do. I just don't know how we put it all together. I just think there's a lot to it. So, and that a lot is the devil and the details, and I don't know what the details are against. So I don't know. I think it's really interesting. I really do.
So, so, I mean, I think that, you know, some of us are here because of the whole road paving issue, you know, about 10 years ago, right? So that's why I'm sitting in this chair. When, depending on which recommendation you take, we'll either be at 83% of our public roads repaved in 10 years, or 81%, and that's coming up here in the budget. So it's not like we're taking money away from somebody else. We are, we are already going to finish two to, two and a half years ahead of plan, assuming we maintain the whole pace. We're getting down to like 17% of the roads that have not been repaved in the last 10 years. So I just want to address that one objection.
Northsider on a private road can argue, I'd rather have that money allocated to the path system to get my golf cart in versus accelerated paving program because the life, the paving program should be based on the expected life of each individual road. Accelerating the pavement road, again, in my opinion, is good, but it doesn't, it doesn't help us long-term because all those roads we accelerated are going to require paving again, but now on an accelerated schedule, a couple of years earlier than they would have been if we would have started with it. So I think it's, I think it's really an interesting conversation.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to disagree with you again, but.
Bill, you don't have support for it.
I know. No, I want to, I want to, so another myth, another myth on the way we're doing the repaving. We are doing the Cadillac approach, four-inch reclamation, not two-inch. So we, those roads, we'll see. Mike Schreick, who's no longer on our account, right, says they will last a lot longer. We're going to soon find out, right? So, but anyway, so it's not going to be, you know, immediately needing to be redone. So, but he doesn't make, it doesn't sound like I have support, right? So I will not belabor this. But what I did hear is we figure out the finer details of this, and it might be something I could revisit and add to the budget. We could add to the budget. Not me.
So perhaps we could add this to a list of those subjects we'd like to do a little deeper dive at a audit workshop.
Thanks, Bobby. Thanks for that suggestion. Oh, geez. All right.
I'm sorry, Bill. You said like six months. You can bring it up next month, but just tell us how it's going to work.
Well, that's the part that we are waiting for some data, and we thought we would have some data.
Right, right.
That's why I keep asking about human resources.
That's my point. You made a point, bring it up six months or half, you know, halfway during the fiscal year.
Well, we had a little bit of a, little.
Talk about it when you're ready. I think everybody supports the discussion.
Okay, I'll sit tight. Keep going.
Well, you know, one of the, one of the primary differences between those who live on private roads and those who live on public roads is that those who bought a house on a private road knew it when they bought it. So that kind of changes the equity because it's just different. So that's why.
Yeah, go ahead, Bobby. Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I cut you off by accident. Sorry.
No, so it's a bigger issue than otters.
Yep.
It's a fairness.
Yeah, it's a fairness. And just go, and I don't want to rehash everything that happened, you know, 10 years ago. So if we were ever in a position to do this, then that was something that I always wanted to be able to do. So it was, it was not fair when they were going to levy a property tax to pave the roads of those, you know, subdivisions that, you know, we would pay for those subdivisions that already got it, right? We'd be paying the property tax. And so this would be a way to get something back.
But they knew that when, they knew that when they bought the house.
Yeah, not everyone knows it, but yeah, I mean, not everyone.
Well, they should have, they should have known. If they had a good realtor, they'd have known.
Yeah, so. That's right, Bobby. Good point there. Bobby, they would know. Okay, so I'm going to stop there because I, I'm not going anywhere on that one, but I didn't hear that anyone said absolutely no. So we'll move on.
We'll research. Yes. We might as well talk about it right now. The road program for the year, the budget includes the full amount, including the bid alternate, which, as Bill said, gets us up to 81%, I think it's right, to 83% in 2015. So that's $1.23 million. If you want to go with just the base amount, that would be $882,000.
Yeah, let me throw this out another way, too. You don't have to decide tonight if you do the base and the alternate. But what you are deciding is to put the money in the budget. If you choose not to do the alternate, then extra money in the budget.
And the transfer from general to capital does not need to happen unless needed.
Correct, yeah. So it doesn't get used. But it's in the budget so that if you wanted to do it, it's all set up. So, is that it?
All right. The public restrooms was another item on the list that Ann had sent out on projects. I talked to Ryan with the Downtown Business Group, and they're putting in a public restroom in the new visitor center that he's building. They requested $4,800 per year for support and cleaning and rotting of the bathrooms. We had in the capital plan to build a structure of some kind. There is some money in there. I don't know if that's needed with these public restrooms now, or if we want to continue with that. I'd open it up for.
I'd like to remind us that two or three years ago, Greg and I and others were working on a program to get public restrooms. And certainly, these restrooms will be of great assistance to the downtown. But when you ask, are public other, additional restrooms needed? This would supply washrooms on the west side of Old McHenry. The east side of Old McHenry has nothing. And somehow, we need to start planning for adding a wash, public washroom on that side of the street. And I don't, I don't remember where the pipes went and where it would be logical to put it, but, but some of that work was already done several years ago. And it's, it's a thing that businesses cry for because at times, they get overloaded with people coming in to use their restrooms. So I think we need to put a, put a placeholder for starting the examination of what, when, and how much it will cost to service the east side of Old McHenry.
I think that makes sense, Bobby. We definitely, last year, when we went through all of the capital budgeting, that definitely was on the line item. I think we were sequencing it out based on both, I think it was meant to happen this year, but we've had too much staff turnover.
We were busy, yeah.
Yeah, no, we, it's just, that one wasn't critical. But I agree with you. I think that makes it, especially, I still remember somebody coming in and saying that the festival people had left stuff, you know, in the back of their yards walking down.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, don't go there. Don't go, don't go, go. Yeah, it's, but, but it's a common thing. I have people come in my office all the time to use my washroom. I don't like to do it, but you do it.
So if we, if we helped with the function for the one that Ryan's proposing, how would that actually work? Like, they would present us an invoice for $4,800, contract directly?
The only thing I want to be certain of is that we don't get involved in any kind of employment, that they would be responsible for employment of somebody to come in every day to clean it.
One approach might simply be to have an agreement with them. The agreement can be very simple. You make it available to the public, we'll provide you a stipend of X dollars, and you'll be responsible for making it available, maintaining it, et cetera. And that way, we have that, any, any kind of entanglement, yet we're providing the support and ensuring the availability of the facility.
What do other towns do? I can't think of any town. Geneva, Libertyville, Arlington Heights, Town Prospect, any town that has public washroom. You know, you've got winterization to worry about if it's going to be down or shut off. Maintenance.
Well, I wonder if the difference might be that they had, have public versus septic, not septic, but, but our, our pipes are so old and so convoluted that the backups are pretty constant.
No, I get all that. I'm, I'm saying, is one washroom is better than no washroom? Is it sufficient? And is it, is it, can you winterize it? You know, in Europe, they have those freestanding loo's that clean themselves every time somebody leaves. You know, it's like, and I think that would draw traffic, actually, to go along and push the button.
Actually, when Greg and I were looking into this, there are a lot of different ways to do this. And, and they don't have to be a conventional kind of thing. And that's why we need to look into it.
So what's the ask for tonight, Bobby? So the, so first off, we want to put some money in the budget because the HDL GBA is going to set up a set of bathrooms in one of Ryan's new buildings. They're asking for about five grand a year, 400 per year. We'd figure out how to, to work it out for Vic's suggestions. That's one item. But secondly, are you looking for, we purposely put this in the question like this. Are you looking to allocate some money for another set of public restrooms tonight?
Yes, yes.
Yes? Yes, okay.
Yes.
And I don't know what that dollar amount would be, so that's the question, right? So.
Yeah, are you looking for us to research options and put some engineering in place for it, or to actually construct and build for the year?
I think it's more complicated than a quickie. I think because of where it would be, how expensive it would be, is there some way to coordinate with an existing building? All of those questions are going to take time. So I would suggest we put like $20,000 in as what might be a starter.
Would anyone be able to say with that?
I think we still don't have hands to figure it out.
Same, same, it's the same discussion we just had.
Just a different magnitude.
Well, it could be a different magnitude. Chris's comment, are we going to build? We're going to build a restroom? I mean, we're talking $200,000, right?
Maybe. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
I don't know.
Can't, can't move a barn for less than that, right?
Put it in the barn.
Put it in the barn. Just kidding. I just think it's premature. I think it's a great idea, Bobby, but, you know, let's, I mean, how do you know 20 grand's a number? Let's throw 50 at it.
I don't. But I know it's not fine.
Hey, I'm just saying it's premature.
Maybe, maybe we'll find out it's not worth it, that it's too expensive, that there's no way to coordinate with an existing building, or like that funny little building that's, it's a foresight building. Nobody's, it used to be the infill center, and whether that could be done. I don't know. We didn't get that far. We just got into what the different ways of treating the subject. So if we put 20 in and it's going to cost $200,000, we're not going to spend it.
Why do we, why do we put 20 in if we don't agree that 20 is even useful? I mean, I should, hey, I agree with the question. What other municipalities do? I was in Mundaline today. Got my haircut, big traffic jam, truck hit a car, that whole thing. I'm just standing there. Where do you go bathroom there? You can't walk into the police station and say, hey, can I get past your glass wall and go take a leak in your bath? Where do you go in Mundaline?
I would support, supporting the HDL GBA. And can we, where we are in the budget process, can we table the rest of it? For maybe there is a workshop on public amenities that has things like pathways and public bathrooms and public e-charging or whatever. We're going to have a workshop to session.
We could fill up a whole night.
We could, or day.
I think we already have tonight. Let's move on.
I'm smarter in the morning.
All right. So Bobby, are you okay? We're going to put, is 4,800 a number?
I'd like to see it in it. It was supposed to be in it two years ago and one year ago, and now it's not. And so I think it should be there. But I think there are so many questions about it that it can sit and wait.
All right. So we, so same thing that we did with the road thing. This is one we've got to get back and workshop, which however we do it. But we are going to put $4,800 in the budget for the other set of baskets to help the HDL GBA out.
And let Vic help us figure out those.
Are we taking any liability for their sewer line?
No. I mean, my, my suggestion would be that it's essentially money to keep it open and to maintain it, and that would be their responsibility in all of the respects.
And if they choose to stop maintaining it, we stop paying and no harm, no foul?
No, I'm thinking of if they run into a big problem with the public bathroom, are we absorbing any liability with that? Or can we, in our agreement, make certain that we don't?
I would anticipate the agreement would protect us from any kind of risk or liability in connection with the municipality.
Okay, okay.
I mean, somebody trips and falls or.
It's not going to be a village facility. It's not going to be anything that the village operates or manages. It's going to be simply that the village is getting a license so that the public use it by paying, you know, the $4,800.
Okay, so something bad happens in their facility, we don't get sued?
Correct. It'd be their responsibility.
Even if they're funding it?
Correct.
Just get it dismissed. Just get it dismissed.
Well, we don't.
We have tort immunity. And we have insurance.
Sorry.
No, I know. I know.
Okay, we're going to keep moving?
We're getting there. All right. So there's also an item on there for surveying the historic buildings in the downtown. I got a refreshed proposal for that. It would be $10,700 to do the downtown, and about $25,450 for the entire village. I thought it might be better to start with the downtown if the board supports doing this at all. And then if, like, like how it works, we can possibly expand it later to incorporate the whole village.
Why do you think it'd be better to start with the downtown and ignore the residents?
To see how the program works and keep it on like a pilot to see what it does.
So a phase two approach. Phase one downtown, phase two potentially, everything else.
It's start north of 22, if I'm mistaken.
Start north to south.
Probably more history downtown.
Well, that's, that's a good question. Because the survey is, the majority of the original homes are historic because of their age. And some of them, I think, are unique. So why don't we, why don't we find out why that's the thought process?
Right. So I thought the definition of historic was 1970s?
Fifty, fifty.
Fifty years, fifty years of.
My lawn cabin's almost there.
Well, that's what I mean.
1980?
You know, but there are several, like some of those prairies on Old McHenry that they're really unique buildings. And there are others like that in, in Long Grove that it would be nice to know about. And it would, and it, and it helps, depending upon what it is and. depending upon what it is and seeing, of course, no tons about it, but I don't know, but there is the possibility of a property tax reduction if, if the building qualifies. So um, I, I, I think the survey would be a really beneficial thing for us to do and to have.
So you would say village-wide?
That, that was, that was the thinking. You know, there aren't, there are a lot of, if you pardon the expression, in four bedrooms, three baths, two storerooms. I don't think that those are signif- as significant as the survey could determine that other, other buildings are.
Would it make sense to allocate the money? This is a budget process. And ask the H, a- a- ask Historic Mission if they have any recommendations on where to start.
There you go. Yes, that makes sense.
And then we can phase it based on whatever our budget number is.
That makes sense.
Well, the question is, do you put the whole twenty five grand in or just put a portion of it in the budget?
I think it takes time. For the surveys.
Yeah.
With the money in there.
Would everyone be okay with putting like the, I don't know, just call it ten thousand seven hundred or twelve thousand, whatever the dollar amount, just earmark it in the budget and to get it all sorted out as we go along?
It'll ultimately come back to the village board as to any kind of authorization for it. But at least now you've got, money's set aside and you give some input from the Historic Mission, uh, see what, if they have any particular uh thoughts on it.
Twelve thousand dollars is an okay number, just?
Not fifteen, round it off.
Everyone okay with fifteen?
I, I, I think we should remember that the downtown is very much against this.
Yep.
They're afraid it will hem, it will constrain them. Or many people are, it, many, I think Rita's intention is data gathering and there, Peter Fuller will go further.
Yep.
It's still private property.
So, so everyone okay? Just, you know, it still has to come back before the board, putting money aside in the budget. And whatever that number is, tell me, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand? Just make that so we can get a budget done. Fifteen okay? Fifteen okay? Bobby, you okay with fifteen?
And well, well, I'm not really okay with the whole subject, but, but fifteen is okay.
Okay, understood and understand. I know the reasons why. Chris, Dan?
Don't care.
Okay, so fifteen it is, but that's the line item in the budget. So I'm going to come back before the board. Okay, now the home rule discussion, you want to?
Yeah, so um, we don't have much information on what this would take right now, but there was interest amongst the trustees to.
I've done some research on it. Basically, it's not so much money here as will and having honestly a workshop. Does this board want to actually get behind it? Because the bigger investment will be our time, energy and reputation. And, and it'll be, any budget would be really for education and communications. But the first thing is for this board to say, do we want to do this? Um, I, I honestly, there's, there's not a lot of.
Dollar-wise.
Not a lot of money.
It's really going to be, I, I will tell you, yeah, the question of home rule, should you or shouldn't you, the answer is yes, you should or you shouldn't. It all depends on how you view it. And, and that's going to be a discussion that you're all going to have to reconcile yourselves with and decide if you want to present it to the community.
I, I don't know that there's some, it, I mean, I spent, I talked to some of the folks from Barrington. I pointed out you all have a link that they still have all of their resources on their public site. It's really a matter of our will and then some money for really communication and education.
I, I have been through the, the salesmanship of, of three or four um, 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 elections like this. And, and, and if you're not committed, it's not going to happen. Um, and it, I, one question I'd like to ask Vic, and that is, if we had home rule, what could we do with those who crash into the bridge?
Uh, probably the biggest thing that we can do as a home rule community that we could not do as a non-home rule is increase the maximum fine for various violations. Now, one of the things that we have done strategically is we have identified a series of violations that occur with each crash. So even though we are limited statistically to seven hundred and fifty as the maximum fine, and I, unfortunately, I don't have this immediately at hand, but I think we had, we had identified five or six different violations that that one crash would create so that from a fine perspective, we would be at a three thousand dollar fine instead of a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine. That's the primary thing with respect to the, to the bridge.
Is it unlimited?
Uh.
If we had home rule, could we set in, is there a ceiling on what kind of fine we could save for anybody crashes the bridge?
There is not, theoretically. Um, a court, however, will, I mean, keep in mind, we don't have the ability to create felonies, whether non-home rule or home rule. And if we set a fine that is excessive, so that in excess of the thresholds for most felonies, a court is likely to find that that's going to be unreasonable. So I think that there is a balance to be struck. Nevertheless, we, we would still have the six violations and if we put that up to fifteen hundred dollars, we've now added the amount to, to six thousand dollars for, for a strike. So I mean, there, there are things that we can certainly do from that perspective.
And as I recall, you said, I don't know, many years ago, we could impose something like a vacancy tax.
Uh, the home rule community has a lot more taxing power, uh, even apart from uh, the lack of restrictions on real estate taxes and general obligation bonding. Um, among those things that could be would be some form of vacancy tax. We, the, the big restriction is we can't base it on the um, the income generated by a business. It can be a tax imposed upon uh square footage. It could be a tax imposed, you know, for example, the, the storage facility. On the tenancy of a storage facility, um, there's a lot of different things that a non-home rule, I'm sorry, a home rule community can do in that regard. Uh, so there's a lot of revenue flexibility that home rule.
I'm actually less interested in the revenue and more interested in eliminating vacancies.
Enforcement, enforcement, of, of getting them occupied.
The aspect as opposed to any kind of care is certainly a part of the overall consideration.
But anyway.
Let me ask the question.
Budget thing, I.
Let me ask the question another way. So the, so do we need to allocate much? Um, because there's ten thousand something, a right amount to allocate.
You could put ten thousand. I mean, that, the studying is not, it, studying is an examination of your own heart of hearts as to how you feel about it. In terms of, you know, if you decide, yes, it's something we should do, the village really can't do much other than to say, please vote on it, here's information. The um, I'll call them campaigns that have been carried out either for or against home rule have to be done privately. The village cannot put money in favor of home rule or against home rule. It can only say, here's home rule information. So I, I would, you know, in my experience, when these things have happened, the lion's share of the money is privately uh generated. It's not something that the municipality.
Yeah, and I, that's what the case was with Barrington. I, they did not, if they spent ten thousand, that might be above the limit.
Right.
And if that would be it, it would be, they're going to host an open house, they're going to encourage people to vote.
And, and really that's, but I'd put money, or put information on the website. That's really where your involvement as a municipality would be.
Would this be in November or in the spring?
It would be strongly recommended to not be in November. Number one, we don't have time and number two, it would be better to get clouded by the November topics.
That, that's what I thought, but, so, so, but it could be the next spring.
Yes, we, there's, boy, there, there are always a host of strategic issues that come involved in this in terms of voter turnout and competing messages that are going out. Um, many communities have looked at it for the general election primary, in which case we would have had to do that back in uh December. Uh, to do it in the general election, it gets lost in, in all of the hubbards.
Oh, no.
Have to do that by August. If we do that for the consolidated election in twenty five, um, that also starts getting confused with the local election issues. And sometimes that's not something that you, you want to mix candidacies and this policy issue. And so I, I can't tell you where you want to go with this. I'm just saying, these are things that when, when I've been involved in home rule considerations before, for a variety of reasons, I will say that the general primary election, which would be an even number election in the spring, has been one that has often been the focus of it because it allows that issue to get greater attention. Just.
It can't be with the school election, can it?
The school election.
Those are, those are in the unnumbered years with the local.
Yeah, those are for the consolidated elections.
Okay, gotcha. I, I think we need to talk about, do we even want to do it?
I don't think we need a budget item for it right now.
Are you okay with that, Bobby, if we don't budget for it?
The, the, yeah, yeah.
As long as we talk about it.
Yeah, we just need to talk about it, yeah.
A workshop, right?
We're going to have, you know, we're going to have to get a few of those things on the calendar now that we have you in place. Yes. Um, all right, so the, the, the other one is not the, the Archer Avenue path, the RPC path from well, across the Archer lots. Um, Bobby, this is one that you asked for. I just want to make sure you weren't in the last meeting when we talked about it. You want that, right?
Yes.
Are you guys okay with supporting that?
I don't understand the need.
I don't, I don't see the need either.
Oh, Lord, you haven't been in downtown when, when people, after they've looked for their bathroom and, and, or they're driving into town and they can't find a parking space, they leave. Because it's too far to walk all the way around the, the parking lot to, to park in the Archer lot. And this would shortcut it so that people could actually shop and, and park reasonably.
Could, can somebody, can you put, can somebody, I, I do not, I'm not trying to be obnoxious.
We had a diagram of it. There was a, it's been a few meetings ago and we don't have a picture of it, sorry. Um, it was, it's a diagonal path. Right now, the, the way to get into Archer, um, you know, right at Robert Parker Coffin Road is you have to walk all the way down to the middle of the parking lot, all the way down to the end. And what Bobby's talking about is you'll just have it at the corner there of Archer, the, at the Archer parking, parking lots, by the Archer lots, between Archer and Old McHenry, you'll just have a diagonal pathway that goes into the parking lot.
RPC.
From RPC, yeah, from RPC.
Archer, that, that corner.
That's a cor- yeah, RPC and Archer. Um, we can draw it on the whiteboard if you want to, that, you know.
Isn't that a safety issue? Is it going to take up parking space to cut something through?
I've, 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 we've already met with, with um, um.
Dr. Levine, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, and he's fine with it?
It's a temporary thing, so, yeah.
It might be ten years. How many years has it been since, since he bought him? Eight years, ten years?
Um, yeah, it would go, uh, uh, yeah, like this, into the parking lot. All right, so.
Am I the only one who's confused? I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just going to say, I think the next item on the agenda is another three, two, three million dollars into downtown. Kind of only downtown right now, let's take this money and use it somewhere else. Walk, that's what sidewalks are for.
Yep.
Relatively, it's an inexpensive solution to a periodic problem in downtown.
Yeah, I can understand if you're on Robert Parker Coffin Road, there's no obvious way to get to your car unless you cut through the lawn. So we can make a path through the lawn. Let me ask you a question another way.
I'm fine with that. I'm okay with that.
You're okay with it? The other thing, Steph, this is over-engineered. What could you really put it in there for? What do you mean?
A gravel path or something?
Yeah, that's all it is, right?
I, I, I don't know what you mean by over-engineered.
Well, it's just uh cutting down the.
Can you put a gravel path?
It's getting a bulldozer in this neighborhood.
Yeah, it seems like, oh, is there a way to tweak this so that it?
We, we put in there asphalt.
Doesn't have.
Have a different material in mind.
And then you create trip paths.
So, you create trip paths. You're telling me people can't go around this?
It's just, yeah, that's basically it. It's getting an easier path, an easier access in from the corner.
They have to get out of their cars to walk, so that kind of.
Well, these are the same people that, that don't take the walk and watch, watch a parking lot at, at a grocery store. Where do people park? Right next to the building. They don't park way out near the other edge. It's not that they can't walk, it's just they don't want to walk.
I park as far away as I can.
Me too, me too.
So, so maybe there's, is there another way to, so if it was gravel, how much would it be? Just estimate. So would anyone be okay, I mean, Bobby, would you be okay if it was gravel path and we budgeted what, twelve grand?
Yes, I, I'm fine with gravel. I, I never thought about what the surface would be.
Is there any amount of money that you'd be okay with putting in the budget, anyone?
Oh, it's not needed. Spend that money north of twenty two.
All right, we're not getting support on that one. Yep.
Okay, then I, I'm, I'm just going to have to be a little sharper on my pencil on your project. So, okay, that's, that's, that's fine. That's, that's really unfortunate for the downtown that's struggling um, to, to fill its, its vacant buildings. But that's, I, I get it, I get it.
All right, let's, I, I guess that's, going to leave that there for now. Um, so, do we want to move to the next slide to talk about the next bullet point? Go ahead. You want to talk about more?
No, I, no, I, I just wanted to, it's a quick question and I can wait until you finish with it.
Okay. All right, so Chris, take us away on this one. We all did back of the napkin stuff to try to figure out what was going on here.
Yeah, so the costs um, for Lake Michigan water, uh, for the primary connection are one point seven five million. We're getting uh nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars in a grant. So our, our capital cost for that would be, you know, just shy of eight hundred thousand dollars. When we ran some numbers on the cost to uh do the radium mitigation for the wellhouse that we currently have and uh the pumps are also nearing their end of life and those have almost doubled in price or more than doubled in price. Um, that all comes out to about nine hundred and forty thousand that we'll have to put out in the next year or two for the well. Um, not to mention some more of the major annual operating costs. We're going to have, uh, we'll save on the, on the water license going from a class B to a class C. Uh, the chemicals go down drastically and we would no longer have a radium disposal fee. In addition, Jeff took me out there with some of the other uh water engineers to tour the plant and water operators showed me some of the equipment uh that we're using for the well. And there's going to be some slow, you know, fifteen to fifty thousand dollar major parts that we're going to have to replace over the next couple of years. Uh, as part of that, that, that would go away. We'd no longer need to use that equipment um if we switched to the Lake Michigan water. So, we're showing a savings now. Um, when we transferred the pencils and got the numbers in, so.
We would not need new pumps in either case?
Pumps, we would not. Want to use the wells as a backup source. We could use the current pumps. We'd only have to test them monthly now instead of using it daily. So we could extend the life out there ten years, fifteen years.
I'm sorry, so that's uh correct. I'm getting you to the short answer.
Yes.
It's so, the new pumps are only needed if we do not connect to the lake that's grabbing water. Okay.
How, how fast can we connect to Lake Michigan water? Because it's, is it possible that we still have to replace the pumps because we can't get the water in fast enough?
Yep.
So we're talking about the, the well, the pumps down in the wells, so we should replace the.
So, we're talking about the well, the pumps down in the wells, so they're in, nearing the end of their useful life. We wanna add for replacement of those, that's why I just included in there. The date, there's testing wells. There's the word for testing optimum performance, but what Chris was saying is use them as a backup. You don't have to run once a month just for testing as opposed to every day.
So, we're not, yeah.
That's how, that's how, that having, not testing it more frequently prolongs the life.
Yeah, they won't have to be used. We just have to, to meet the requirement. We have to run the system and test it once a month.
I see. So, they don't age on their own, you know, the pistons don't disintegrate or-
So, the idea here was the-
Is this, is this our major discussion of a million, two million dollar project? This is it?
No, Bobby, I mean, this is about a line item in a budget that has to all be discussed.
Oh, okay, cause, cause we don't know what this is gonna cost, nor how we're going to manipulate people and units into paying for it, nor what that unit is going to cost.
Correct, correct.
But seventeen grand, boy, oh, boy, we better hold on to that one.
I'm gonna leave very soon if this is-
So, 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 but what this was, was to at least put some context to the discussion we had in the last meeting saying, hey, we're getting a grant, we have a water system that, you know, we have a bunch of people in the downtown that invested in connecting, that we need to keep operating. We're getting, this radium mitigation's getting imposed on us.
Yeah, but, but we agreed on a July first date, I believe.
Correct, correct, correct. But this was just explaining-
Okay, so I, I, I'm not, I'm not blind.
Yeah, so this was just explaining that there, you know, most likely the operating costs, we could actually, you know, we would actually break, or actually be positive with the Lake Michigan water and the operating costs, right? And then that's the lower half of it. The other half is saying, hey, we're gonna have to make some of these investments anyway, so Lake Michigan water looks even better as a result of that, because we're getting the grant. So, that's what, all this was, was to say, hey, can, does everyone feel confident enough to put it in the budget? And then by July one, which we agreed to the last meeting, Bobby, we would work out the finer points.
Absolutely.
It's important to understand that we're going to have to spend money no matter what. The question is, will we spend it on Lake Michigan water, or will we spend it on pumps and radium mitigation? Either way, we're gonna have to spend money. It'll actually cost us less money for Lake Michigan water as a lump sum to implement it, as well as less money going forward every year because of the class C water license versus class B, because of less chemicals, and because we won't be paying a radium disposal fee. So, we have to understand, this is not should we spend money or should we not spend money. We're gonna spend money. Is it on the lake water, or is it on the existing system? And it's cheaper by the lake water. You're saving money by buying lake water.
I strongly want us to connect to it because I think the money makes sense, and I think we have a better product to sell.
Do you guys need to look at the environmental working group? I checked out Buffalo Grove Water. I've looked at Long Grove, Long Grove Water before, and a lot, you know, they don't have too many, like Briar was on there. Um, the one-
Here's one, I think.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them out there, and Alden, and they all have like some contaminants, but Buffalo Grove Water is worse than anything I found in Long Grove. So, environmental working group, not good water.
What's environmental working group, a company?
Uh, they, they went and tested-
The testers?
Yeah, I don't know that they passed, but they, I think aggregated the data that comes from, I'm not sure. But it was a long time ago that I looked at this, and it just pulled up after the last meeting, Buffalo Grove Water, it's not good.
So, so tonight, we're not making the decision on to do or not to, we're making the decision to allocate money to the budget pending all these types of discussions, right? Was everyone okay putting it in there?
Yes.
You're putting it as eight hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. It's not just eight hundred. It's a lot of money in the budget, but decisions have to still be made to spend it, right?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yes, yes. Bobby, you're okay with that? Chris?
I'm gonna pass. I, I, I don't want to allocate that money yet.
Okay.
But I really don't know what the end benefit is and to who. I get the radium thing, I got it easy, clear. But what's the build out of that water system look like, and what residents are potentially able to access it? And how many residents are able to access it, and what costs, you know, so there's a lot in the details. So, I'll, I'll just pass on that.
And Bobby asked for that at the last meeting, right, Bobby? So, yep.
I think part of that is also, we're not gonna have those answers until the staff dedicates the time, and given their limited time, they want to know that there's a semi-green line, at least moving forward on the budget.
I'm good with it, Bobby, if you want to know. I'm good supporting it, so. All right, so, so is that the end of the budget discussions? I mean, what we're, what we're talking about here is, this is gonna, go ahead. Oh, you have a question, go ahead. Yeah, 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 sorry, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Okay, so, on page seven. A four percent interest earned on a million, under a million dollars, thirty, thirty thousand on interest. Get, I'm just suggesting then put in a, in a higher interest rate account. Page seven.
I think one of the things I'd like to do, the higher interest account, is, you know, get somebody more full-time, get a consultant in here, and have him sit down with our, with our bookkeeper, and make sure we're real clear on how the interest is allocated. Cause we've got a real large chunk at NRC Book right now.
Yes.
It's earning five point seven percent. This allocation doesn't quite make sense, so it's like-
Right. Yeah, and I, I, yeah.
So, that's not really a budget discussion, it's just-
It's, it's-
Yeah. Basically, having somebody look at it and sort out, are we, can we get, you know, can we do this better, right? Make more money?
Yeah.
Perfect project for the finance, right?
It, yes, it is.
And on page sixteen, just to re, the pathway fund, where it's, we're gonna budget twenty-four. That's the number that's changing, right?
Which page? Page-
Eighteen.
The seventeen, fifteen thirty. You don't have a second page?
We have page whatever of twenty-four.
It's on, pathway fund's eighteen, on the new sheet.
Are there some pages on there?
No, I think you, the sheets from last-
Page eighteen, we can add.
It has zero dollars. It has zero dollars.
We're talking about putting money in.
This, this, oh, yeah, right, twenty-four.
It's got nothing.
Yeah, that will, that will change now, that would be-
What's the dollar amount that's being put in there?
We said one hundred.
A hundred thousand.
And, and we don't have, I don't think we have in this budget, anything for, um, what's that? Um, maintenance and, or, it's, I don't think it's been kept up to date since Denise.
I was thinking about website and the-
Um, the Congress is very soon gonna pass a law regarding accessibility of websites nationwide. It's a pretty strict law, and, um, do hold corporate and especially government entities feet to the fire on these kinds of websites. So, I'm, I'm just suggesting, I'm, I didn't see anything in here regarding webmaster or maintenance or updating. And I was on our website a couple of weeks ago and, and got extremely frustrated. You know, I kept putting in exactly what I wanted to know, and it just took me all over the place. Maybe it's me, but I, I don't find it user-friendly. I don't find it inviting, or I think some pictures on it are kind of grab anymore.
Internet webpage five thousand.
What is it?
Now, can we do it five thousand or do one ton?
What is that? I know, I know Dave Westphake and I, this is the, the government website several, that's five years ago.
Aren't we paying something, the service? I think we're paying for the service.
The, the main service we're paying for, I believe, is to feed in the current code.
Okay.
Um, but there, I think there may be like a somewhat of a user feed to whoever it is, Civic Plus or whatever it is, that's underneath us, the engine, but, yeah.
And I see they're broken links.
I think the update is, is really staff.
Maybe-
Or, or consultant outside as a person.
Yeah, we, we were lucky with Denise in that she understood all that.
And she was curious-
Exactly.
About it, yeah, so it was something she took-
So, I'm, I'm just, I, I don't know if five thousand is for maintenance, I don't know if it's for improvement. I, I think it's something-
Can't work my computer.
Yeah, so the question is, do we add more money right now, or, or not?
Something we should, I, I think it's something we should pay attention to.
Just pay, maybe pay attention to it, okay.
Better.
Yeah, I don't know if you want like a whole website overhaul, or if you just want to make sure we're routinely updating what's currently existing. Okay.
Um, it's a suggestion, you know, I continually get frustrated with it. And I don't find I have that problem with, when I go into other towns and villages' websites.
What else do you have on your list?
That's it.
So, so-
Who else got answers?
So, I mean, maybe we don't put money in for that, just something else can be looked at, can be, yeah.
Oh, did we, did you find out what tree, tree income is on page one?
Isn't the tree income what we get?
We have ten thousand dollars of tree.
I, I believe it's the tree fees that we get for when people cut down their trees and totally replace it.
Ah, that's all, that's all the-
We don't have any money.
A lot of trees being cut down.
Yeah.
Protected trees, which frankly are-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so here's, here's the deal. So, we're, the next meeting, these changes are gonna be added, it's gonna go, it's gonna, um, what, in a couple of days, it's gonna be put up on our website, right, for viewing. We have to take an ad out in the papers, so that there's gonna be a public hearing, all that stuff's gonna have to happen. And this will be the budget that'll be presented at the next meeting. Got a question? I can't make Tuesday, I can make Thursday. Doesn't look like you can make Thursday. You're out of town, Chris, at the next meeting?
I might be out of town.
Might be out of town. So, we have a, you know, Dr. Jamil said that he can't make Thursday, you can't make Thursday. What?
Sorry.
That's okay. You can?
I can make either one. I prefer the original, but I can make both.
Bobby, are you gonna be able to be here in person? Next meeting, or you don't know yet, probably, right? It's cutting in. We just need to make sure we have a quorum, because we have to pass the budget. And I, I can be here on Thursday for sure. I am out of town on Tuesday, so it's whatever you all want to decide.
I, I'm here that way, so you-
Okay.
So, it's Ann, you, me, potentially Bobby.
Yeah.
And that's it.
That's it.
That's our quorum.
We need to have four-
We need to have four trustees.
Four bodies in the room.
Well, does he count, or do we, oh, he, he, okay, all right, then we need them.
So, we have time, I guess, to sort it out. I think that, we need to figure out, because we have to pass the budget. So, if you can't make it work on Tuesday, I mean, if you can, then fine, I'm, I'm not there. If you can make it work on Thursday, love to be there. If not, I got it.
I have Tuesdays. I, I just, I had it open and then-
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Hit it, and then it's just, oh, by the way, and that's it.
Yep. So, anyway, so I guess we'll, if that's the one thing we'll have to sort out, you know, but that's it. We have a budget to work with, so.
Yep, incorporate all these changes. Okay, time to stop for tonight.
And all we have now is the village engineer's report.
Okay, so briefly, just a couple of highlights here. The root line here, installation, I guess, mainly sold to the seed out last week. Um, we're planning to do it tomorrow, but Mario Lopez is here, so we, we're just on Thursday's Friday. Uh, we'll make this program, uh, we've got some national reviews, we've used some of the team money, and attempted to make a bid opening date for that. Going down, Arlington Heights Road reconstruction, this is number nine. The county had a reconstruction meeting yesterday on that, and I found out that construction is not gonna start in April. Um, some water main conflicts with Buffalo Grove, we need to work out. And we seen that seventeen hundred feet of water main is not where they thought it was. So, that's, uh, construction start date is to be determined based on, depending on the revolution of those-
I'm sorry, they lost a sixteen inch water pipe?
No, 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 they got, they got seventeen hundred feet of water main on the facility that says it went out, which was actually located in the field, and it was not where the, the water main. So, it's all sorts of conflicts, and against county policy for putting water main under roads and things like that. So, I'm gonna sort that out.
Okay.
Um, so, when I get to schedule a shift, that, and that's all the updates I had in the interest of time, but I need you to answer any questions or anything with, uh, skip over.
Any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. The village president trustee reports.
I have no reports. Mr. Roski?
Um, no, I just want to make sure everybody has a chance to read this magazine.
I did.
It's a very good article in here, but it all is quoted as saying-
Easier to say, it's harder to say no.
It's hard to say no.
Yes, I caught that too.
So, if you have a chance, take a look at his comments, it's very interesting. Nothing else to report.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, trustee Kritzmeyer?
No.
Trustee O'Connor?
No.
Trustee O'Reilly? Muted, Bobby. Bobby? No, you're here, she's there. Bobby, do you have anything?
No.
Thanks, Bobby. Uh, trustee Tanucci?
Yep, I have one. So, I just want to say, thanks to Nicole's efforts and other members of the CSC, we have a recommendation to approve three CC's grant, grants, potentially at the next meeting, I hope. That'll be within this budget year. Well, thank you for that. We're back on track.
So, it's back to life?
Six more to look at, at least, that I know of. Pardon me?
I said it's back to life, good.
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Great.
Nothing, bye.
If there's something else, looking for motion adjourned?
So moved.
Okay, move by trustee O'Connor, second by trustee Kritzmeyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.